I'll order the January 18th meeting of the Northern Oak County Fire Authority.
Paul Gamka?
Yeah.
George Cullis?
Yes.
Diane Scheib Snyder?
Yeah.
Peter Stauffer?
Yes.
Karen Winchester?
Here.
Chief Lince?
Here.
Very good. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do I have any commentary on the agenda?
I'd like to see us move our new business B to unfinished business B, swap them out. Just put, swap the two Bs between old and new business. Since we have the attorney here, we can take care of that and then he can go.
Gotcha.
See what I'm saying?
Yep, yep. The designation is unfinished business.
Would be, B would be not employee complaint letter. And then under new business B would then become scheduled attorney interviews.
Any other changes on the agenda? Hearing none. Can I just have a voice vote for approving the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Who supported? Okay, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda is item three. All items listed on our consent agenda are considered to be routine, non-controversial, does not require discussion, but not before it can be approved by one motion. There is no separate discussion. If discussion is desired on an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will automatically be moved to the last item under new business. Do I have my motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll support.
Okay, down to the ball. I'll have a voice vote again. All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
It's going to be a roll call.
Has to be a roll call. Do we have a roll call, please?
Karen Winchester, yes. Diane?
Yeah.
George?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes. Option passes. Fourth item on the agenda is reports, beginning with the chief's report.
You put her in your packet where the December run counts, as well as the total run counts for the year 2021. For December, we did 112 calls, so we made a lot of medicals. Two total work in fire district, district. Moving on to the, I'm sorry, the questions on just the December. Going on to the year end totals, as you can see, the outline there in 2021, we did 1,222 calls. 180 more than the prior year. It works to above 15, 16% increase. The medicals were heavily slowed a little bit. The fires were a bit. But overall, like I said, 180 more calls than the prior year. We did many more mutual aid medicals from the year prior. We do expect the number to go down some now that Highland and Springfield both got advanced life support transport. Mutual aid medical calls over to those areas. So I do expect that to go down. Per year. Unless we continue to run more calls in the village, but. Total EMS related calls for 2021 were 807. We did 524 transports. The average response time to our priority one calls were 7.3 minutes. 439 emergency calls. We had 499 calls in Holly Township, 532 in Rose, 5575 and an official run book of 96.
Chief, if I can interrupt you, just to clarify, when reading the EMS incidents?
Yes.
And you can document this, that 807, it's actually the total of the next three lines. Is that correct? Pretty close.
Not necessarily. Total EMS related calls could be just our single number calls that go out. Could be car accidents with the victims that were involved in car accidents. Those are all EMS related calls.
If you add those three numbers together, they total 807.
Oh, well, I do good math.
My point being, the three breakdowns.
So, yeah, I guess they would, yeah, because we did a total of 524 transports. We had a transporter and we're eight, and so we had an outpatient sign loss with 275. Yeah, so, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, I just didn't want you to be confused. I think we did all of those. The three are a sum of the total.
Right, yes.
Okay.
And how does the 762 up on top, EMS medicals relate to that?
So the 762, again, kind of what I was saying, 762 are the EMS medical calls that we got called for that were specifically medical calls.
Okay.
As opposed to.
Those are a subset of the 807.
Yes, the vehicle accidents with injuries would be included in that number to an extent because, oh, we got called out for a vehicle accident. It was for the vehicle accident. The patients, no matter how many were in the vehicle, if they needed treatments, they were counted as the total EMS related calls as well.
Well, how do you explain the severe weather jump? Like a 10 times jump?
Because we had several instances last year of high winds, thunderstorms that we responded on, a lot of trees down, wires down.
That month period where we had three or four of them around?
Yes. Yeah, we had pretty good volatile weather here. Any other questions on the run counts? And then just to let the board know, I ended up lawyers that were designed and done up for our recruitment program. The fire academy position did start two weeks ago, week and a half ago. So that's going on then. But this was something between Captain Seal and Parker Patrick, who had the, I guess, the equipment to produce these. This is what they came up with. I think it's pretty professional and helpful. That provides a lot of information for recruitment. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Okay. Rose Township, do you have anything to report?
Rose Township Board approves, well, going to be approving ballot language for the renewal of the fire EMS services. We had a discussion and we decided to put four mills on the ballot for August. That will have to be approved by resolution, as well as the language will have to be approved. But that's where we're at at this point.
Okay. Holly Township.
The Shannon Fasteners Facility. Construction's underway on that building. If you get a chance to go up that way, it's enormous. It's just incredibly long building up there. But that project is underway and we finally have landed a meeting with the Oak County Executive over the sewer project for Dixie Highway. So, we're going to do as well on that and progress that. That's pretty much it at this point.
I would like to report that I did watch Rose Township's meeting regarding the fire millage. I think with the decision to go at four mills, which is what Holly Township's at, I think now is one of the best times for us to reconsider a taxing authority. It seems that, you know, there's some feet dug in about Rose versus Holly, which is very divisive and it's not that way. Everybody, every homeowner would be paying the four mills, whether you live in Holly, whether we live, or, you know, in Rose or in Holly. And it's just like a school district. Obviously, if Rose's values are more than Holly's at this point, which is not going to last very long, then you pay more for the schools. It's the same concept. We would have probably uncovered a lot more of that had we had been allowed as board to follow through with researching being a taxing authority. However, that was not allowed to the NACA board because Rose decided that it didn't want to do it based on the Holly versus Rose thing. But I think it's really time that we do that and take the politics out of this so that we can move forward as a board without the politics. It's a district and everybody's going to be paying the same thing, no matter where you live. It's in that district. That's it.
Anything else? Paula?
No.
Okay, Elizabeth Ann Lark has no report this one. Moving on to presentations, we have none. Item six is unfinished business and we have two items on here. Employee complaint letter and an item B, a not employee complaint letter. I believe that the complainee has asked for this to be a closed session. And did that come from a board?
No, that should have been in an open meeting, as well as deciding if the attorney should be there.
I think they do have regarding that topic, just, I guess, procedural clarification.
Yeah.
I know that the board member threw an email that requested closed meeting and counsel. And then there was some confusion with Mr. Falk, whether or not he should appear at this meeting or not, which he had replied to the board last week about that. I waited to see if there was going to be a response from any of the board members, which there wasn't, and so finally, like Friday, I responded to Mr. Falk and explained to him my, my opinion was that he would not be needed at this time because the process in place was, there was a point file for an employee with a board. And before that, I shared with the board with a cover letter explaining the details of it. And at that point, requested that it go on the agenda. So I guess I need some clarification because the way that this ended up, Mr. Falk being here, my mind, we kind of conducted business through emails prior to actually originally opening up this new agenda item and seeing official level, I guess, or board open meetings level, what the response was from the people that were involved. I guess it, just am I reading that wrong? Or, and that is why I had told Mr. Falk, you know, I didn't think we needed him yet to officially have this meeting to acknowledge the agenda item and see what the official response is as a board. And I know that late Sunday, a couple of board members, including yourself, had responded back to my reply to Mr. Falk, saying, no, we do need you here. And I think the tone of your emails, that was kind of questioning, you know, we don't have a process.
Right.
So I guess.
It's the boards, the board should have asked him to be here. That's usually the process, unless we know for fact it's something that's coming down that we would need it under attorney client privileged information. But it should have been a board decision to have him here.
So for clarification, because the word was put out that the complainant asked for a TV closed session. Are the employees that have filed complaints, have they requested closed session?
No.
Okay, so the request is from a board member?
Yes.
Okay, that's just for clarification.
And that can't be done outside of a meeting either. That has to be done inside a meeting. There should be no discussion of.
I apologize, Mr. Falk, about the confusion, but I was just trying to go with what I thought was the proper way to handle this.
And that's why I raised the question is, should I be there?
Exactly.
I was advised that if a board member is asking me to be there, that I'd be there. That it's a decision of the board, it's a request from the individual board members on here. So if you need to do, go on the record and do whatever you need to do, let's do it. But I'm here at the request of individual board members.
Okay. So we have, we have two complaints here where the complainee has asked for a closed session. And under Michigan law, MCL 15 dot 268, closed session for municipal purposes, a public body may need a closed session only for the following purposes. And one of those purposes is to hear complaints about a public officer, staff, staff member, employee, or individual if the named individual requests a closed session. So.
Diane, will you do that in public?
Sure.
It was not done in public. It was done in a private email.
That's fine, but I don't.
I don't see anywhere in here where it requires a public request. What is that?
Yeah, I don't think that the, that the act on its face talks about that. But I don't see any problem with making a public request ahead of her in a closed session.
Why else would you do it? There, I have the agenda item. She has to ask the board to go into closed session. How else do you do that, not just by the chair saying so?
The chair's not saying so. Chair has been requested, has been notified that there's a request for a closed session. I'm reading the Michigan law that allows us to do that. And I would suggest that, I would like to make a motion to move these two, these two items to closed session under MCL 15 dot 268, section 8A.
And let me be clear that I'm here because a board member or two asked me to be here. It's anticipated that this request is going to be made. Looks like it's being made.
I'm just asking for it to be procedurally, that's how it's usually done. So, but we change rules here.
I'm just going on the record to say that. I don't think there's any argument.
No, I just, I think it's appropriate.
So the request is within the motions with making that, I would support it.
Okay, there is support.
Support, and by my understanding, the motion or when someone requests to go into closed session, doesn't even have to be a majority vote. That's what I consulted attorney about.
You said it does or doesn't?
It does not even.
Well, I don't, I don't, you know, well, I'll advise you. I don't want to see.
Okay, thank you. I'll support.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there any discussion about the motion to move to a closed session? Okay, Karen, can we take a roll call, please?
Who? George supported. You made a motion?
I made the motion.
Okay, Karen Winchester, yes. Peter Stauffer?
Yes.
Diane?
Yeah.
George?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Take the move. Second item approved to move to closed session for two agenda items. Could we vacate from?
So is this all the stuff letters about Diane? Is that what this can give off? Closed session is all about Diane? Is that right?
Yeah.
Thanks. At least we got one on this person from the board.
There came a motion to.
For the three most motions to go back into open?
Or?
Support.
All in favor? Yeah.
Aye.
All opposed, same time? Okay, we're back in open session. They can make motion on item 6A. I move that we conclude the investigation based on our discussion in the closed session.
I'll support.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Paul Gamka?
Yeah.
Peter Stauffer?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes.
Diane Scheib Snyder?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, no.
Okay. Majority votes to approve the motion. On the, is there, is there any other motions dealing with item 6A? Okay, moving on to items, the new 6B, the not employee complaint letter dated 1/5/2022. I can make a motion to conclude the investigation based on discussions in the closed session.
I'll support.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Paul Gamka?
Yes.
Peter Stauffer?
Yes.
Diane Scheib Snyder?
Yeah.
George Cullis?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes.
Approved. Moving on to our first item under, under seven. Thank you, Gary, for your time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Moving on to item seven, new business. Item A is the annual NACA board officer appointments. I'd like to open the floor to the board to appointments for a position of chairman.
Move to point, Peter Stauffer, Karen.
Move to appoint. Okay, appoint is another priority.
Nominate.
Yeah, that's true.
Move to nominate, Peter Stauffer.
It's a matter of course, anyway.
I'd like to make a long time to nominate Peter Stauffer, yes.
Are there any other nominations for the position of chairman?
She's made a motion. She didn't make an nomination. She motioned.
I asked for nominations.
We probably need support, though.
You don't need to support for nominations. Nominations are thrown in bucket.
I would move to nominate George Cullis.
Over. A second nomination. So I do have a question about this. Did some, looking back in our past minutes, and I also took a look at Robert's board, and there is no clarity as to how to deal with multiple nominees for a position. And so I'm curious, it's probably, we have historically dealt with that, if we have. Do you just do a straight up vote on the two?
Nobody ever wanted to be it. You just got it. This is the first.
This is the first, so there's no.
At least in my 22 years.
I think if you have two people, if you've got five people to vote, you just ask each person for a name.
That's one way to do it. The other way to do it is to vote on each one individually. But I guess.
So I guess I don't know why they're.
It's kind of the same.
Yeah, it is.
It's the same.
Are there any other nominations for the position of chair? Okay, hearing none, I close the nominations. Karen, can you give us a voice vote? Roll call vote?
I'm, I'm really confused here. This.
I.
There's two nominations.
And two nominations.
Say, who do you want, one here or the other?
There should be a motion and support for, I don't, we've never done nominations. So I think that I.
Well, that's what I was asking.
Well, because I want a discussion on this for one, so I guess it's always been.
So what Robert's report says is you can, you can either just take nominees. They don't require a second. They can't be amended. You just, you throw names on the hat and then you can either do just a vote and a majority wins, as long as you have at least a majority of the board is present. So if you end up with a two, two and one vote, if you have three members, there is no vote and you have to continue voting. The other, the other way to vote it through is to say, you know, pick the first person on there who is in favor of electing Pete. And then you do that, but then you run the risk of two people actually being elected. So it is not clear and we don't have precedence for it. You may at this point have any discussion you wish, if you're not ready to move on to a vote.
Well, I feel that when you're looking at Robert's rules, you're looking at assemblies. You're looking at a large group. This is a very small group. And not all of those rules apply to these sort of boards. So I think that, I mean, there's a five member board and you're taking nominations. I don't know. I just.
That's why I started this by asking for suggestions on how we've been done on the past. So when we do it according to our.
Well, let's make this real simple. Do you want to continue as the chair?
I accept the nomination.
Okay. Do you have support of those two people? Because if you do.
I have no idea. I haven't handled.
Well, all we have to do is ask.
Yeah.
Diane, she made the note motion. Paul said, yes, it's done. Surprise.
So it's, right, so, so is there support?
Surprise.
I just have a problem, Peter, because through, through our issues with your censorship of me and the comments, you clearly said that you don't answer, you're not elected. And I think that that's, that the citizen at large should not be the chair for that exact reason. You do not answer to any of the electorates and you're making, you're, you're running this meeting and, and doing things that aren't in the best interest of this board or the people in the communities. So I don't think it's appropriate, the citizen at large is the chair. And I don't think in history, there probably has never been one.
I will say this.
That is correct.
Right, and so I think it's inappropriate.
In relationship to how the positions on this board are here, when we went through policies and procedures, when we took them back to each township, when we discussed term limits, time on the board, we sent that to the attorney, previous attorney. That attorney's opinion came back and felt that it was a healthy thing for the board to have those. This board, in a three to two vote, against that. So we are currently, you will be the citizen at large on this board until you die or resign because there is no other way to change that. Back at the time, that was discussed.
Can I give you one quick correction on that?
It's.
The bylaws allow a majority of the board to remove the citizen at large. There is enough of it.
I think it's a gray area. It's their.
But it's, but it's a very clear three to two. Rose Township has three and one. It was never meant to be that way. But prior to you coming on the board, anytime Dave Curris was absent, Diana was brought up the fact that if he's not going to be able to make the meetings, we should get a different citizen at large. And she always said that it was time for Rose Township to have representation. And in one of those meetings, I said, how long has Dave Curris been on the board? And at the time, I was told six years. The question I didn't think to ask was how many years had Rose Township had the citizen at large? Didn't find that out till later. What turns out, it was like 14 to six or 11 to six or something. And in those policies and procedures, we discussed, did it make sense to go back and forth? Did it make sense for the representation to change? Did it make sense for the re-terminals? And the board voted no. When it went back to the townships, the reason Holly Township didn't approve those changes or amendments to the policies and procedures was because that vote went against the attorney's opinion. was because that vote went against the attorney's opinion and left nothing there. In those discussions, if you remember, we even talked about it's a four year term for the elected officials, that perhaps the way to give true balance to the board would be to have Rose Township for two years and Holly Township for two years. And again, that was voted down in a three to two vote. So those are the concerns that are there. I understand the concerns going forward. The bottom line is with this one, it really doesn't matter how we approach this. It's very clear that you're going to continue to be the chair because there are three people that say so. So we don't need to go further on this. We just move on to the next. And quite clearly, in regards to A, under new business, annual knock for board officer appointments, just tell us how it's going to be. Because that's clearly how it's been. And we don't need to go any further. We don't need to debate how we talk about. Because it really doesn't matter.
No.
It's a done deal. So just let us know what's going. So you've got Peter for chair. What's your next call? If you want to vote on it, go ahead.
Needs support.
We have two nominees right now. And I'm going to have to literally set up. Is there any further discussion on nominees for chair? Could we have a voice roll call, please?
I don't have no idea what I'm doing.
You're going to say Pete Stauffer and I'm going to tell you either George Cullis or Pete Stauffer is my vote.
Oh, each person, can I say a person's name?
You got it.
It's a doggy question, but any way you look at it, it's just here.
All right. Paul Gamka?
Pete Stauffer.
All right, hang on, I gotta, I gotta prepare myself. For more tyranny. Clearly, all right.
He's not on the board.
Hmm?
I said, he's not on the board. Human.
Okay, Paul Gamka? It's Peter. Okay. Diane?
Pete Stauffer.
George?
Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
You forgot to ask Pete.
Pete?
Pete Stauffer.
There you go.
All right, for you too.
Karen, did you vote?
Neither, neither one of us did. It doesn't matter. Just look at this. Who's going to be the vice chair? Can you tell us that?
All right, so.
This is incredibly odd that a democratic process is.
It's time to tell you that I'm sorry that I called you a clown because you're a buffoon. You're a pompous buffoon. Do you hear that?
Could you please keep your comments from the.
I'll do what I want to do like you do.
Could you please keep your comments?
No.
To yourself and.
No, 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 no. If you're going to have an exchange with me, I'm going to tell you no.
If this continues, I'm going to have to request that Mr. Stern be removed from the.
I don't think so.
The proceedings? Thank you. Are there, are there any nominations?
So we have separately.
We have the. We have the vice chair or the.
Vice chair.
That's not what it's, what's the title of the file?
It's vice chair.
It's a vice chair. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
George Cullis, I decline.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair?
No, not now.
You're nominating yourself?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Are there any further nominations for vice chair? Okay, hearing none, or like a voice vote?
There should be a support.
Supported, somebody.
Wow, possible, yeah.
It's been moved and seconded then, if we want to go down that path, to elect Diane Schig Snyder as vice chair. All in favor? Diane? All opposed?
No.
Can I call for a roll call, please?
Paul Gamka?
Yes.
George Cullis?
No.
Diane Schig Snyder?
Yes.
Peter Stauffer?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, no.
For the position of secretary, do you have any nominations? Karen, if for reference, you will be asked to continue on the roll.
I decline.
Until by the bylaws, by the bylaws on which you were elected to the position, you'll be asked to.
Not in the bylaws. I decline.
But we asked to continue. Replacement and.
I nominate Paul.
I decline.
Okay.
Karen, reconsider.
No.
This, this will be your last warning. I'm going to ask that you be removed from the proceedings. If we have another outburst. I will.
We'll see. See what happens.
Yes, we will. There's several options. I can ask someone to store you out and they can choose to help you out the door.
Why don't you call, why don't you call the troopers? Call the troopers.
There, in just a few minutes, you can get up and do your public comment. That's all that.
There probably won't be a good, a good outcome from that. If the outbursts continue, if the outbursts continue, we will then close the meeting for the day until, for the day when you can behave in an appropriate manner.
No.
That's, that's the rules.
It's not your lead.
It's Robert's rules of order. Please.
You don't, you're not a parliamentarian. You don't know Robert's rules of order. If you want to have an exchange with me, I'm going to, I'm going to call back.
Chief? Could you request that Mr. Stern be removed from the meeting?
Not requesting anything. It's not.
All right, I'm going to make a motion for it, Karen.
I'm for it. All in favor?
We have to have public comments.
Go ahead and vote.
Go for it.
Next flyer. We got.